It is six o'clock, so. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Town Southbridge Joint General Government Subcommittee slash Town Council Meeting Tuesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Six P M. In the Veterans Meeting Room. Agenda number one is called to order. And there's our third member, so thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Agenda number two is roll call. Uh, Counselor Marquetti is excused. Uh, Citizen Member Denise Clements is not present right now. Uh, Citizen Member Kelly.
Present.
Uh, Counselor Dow. And Counselor Montigny, present. We have a quorum of three. Uh, Agenda number three is review discuss a transfer request of Town Clerk Department in the amount of twelve hundred dollars from the following accounts. Zero zero one one six one dash five three zero five hundred. Book and report for five hundred dollars. Zero zero one one six one five seven one one zero zero. Conference and meetings for six hundred dollars. Zero zero one one six one dash five four two zero zero zero. Office supplies for one hundred dollars. To salary and wages full time, zero zero one one six one dash five one one zero zero zero. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Oh.
Second.
Okay, Mister Manager.
Thank you. Uh, on a lot of these salary accounts, what we're finding is they were short because they either didn't count for step increase when they did the budget last year. Or sometimes we have a twenty six point one week, so we're not sure exactly short, but all departments were asked to go and look and review their departments and make sure that they had accurate. Salary line item, so that's the reason for this transfer.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. Uh, Agenda number four is review discuss a transfer request of the Town Clerk Department in the amount of fifty dollars from specialized services account. Zero zero one one six two dash five three zero 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 to repair and maintenance account, zero zero one one six two dash five two five one zero zero. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
Uh, Mister Manager, fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, yeah, typewriter repair. They use typewriter awful lot down there in the Town Clerk's office, so.
Very well. Okay, um, Counselor Dow.
What what do you mean by? Repair? Account. Repair and maintenance account.
He said it was a typewriter.
A typewriter. They have to maintain it and repair it.
It's like an antique.
Antique. They use it. They do a lot of typing in that office for records and.
And she don't have a budget for that, suppers and for like.
She did. It's just over. That's why it's. It was an unanticipated repair. She keeps a minimal amount in that and it just needed further maintenance than she had anticipated.
Thank you, Counselor Dow. Does anybody have anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. Agenda number five, review discuss a transfer request of the Town Clerk Department in the amount of thirty dollars from seasonal positions account, zero zero one one six two dash five one two zero zero to. Uh, advertisements and promo account, zero zero one one six two dash five three four one zero zero. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
Uh, Mister Manager.
As noted in her transfer request, there were more elections than we had anticipated because of the special elections.
Okay, is that missing a zero, that account number? It's.
Which one?
Uh, the one, the the first account number that I read for seasonal positions. I don't know, it just has one number short than all the other accounts on the agenda. I was just making sure. If it's correct, then so be it. Uh.
Double check on what it is, but.
Okay. All right. Uh, does anyone have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. Agenda number six, review and discuss an accounting department transfer of twenty five thousand dollars from account number zero zero one nine four five dash five six five zero zero zero. Other assessments, S W C R V S to account number zero zero one one three five dash five three zero 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 specialized services. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second. Mister Manager.
So this goes to the question that uh, Miss Kelly asked at the last meeting. How much did we spend for Lori Del Olio?
Oh.
We had probably it was like twenty two five for the year, so this is the transfer to pay that. For the year. So it's a little bit more than eighteen thousand, I think I I quoted at the mid, but it was twenty two five and then she'll be doing a couple more things this week as we're ending up close to the year, so that's just. Whatever money's retained, we go over to uh, free cash.
And this was at her old rate?
At her old rate.
Working with that company?
Correct.
Counselor Shen, you.
Just a question. This late in the air, there was one more week left.
Yep.
So how can it be that much money that we need to pay? We don't pay until the end of the year?
We've been paying. We had some money in specialized services, uh, but there's other because we had, uh, we also had to pay a contract out, so they did run some of it in the negative and then they're now cleaning up the uh, accounts.
When we originally hired her, didn't we transfer money?
Not for her.
Not for her company?
No. That was that was a a transfer for a different purpose, for the audit.
Oh, that was.
Cause they didn't budget the audit numbers correctly. They used the old number for the audit, not the new number for the audit.
So. Okay.
Yeah.
See other questions at the next meeting? Cause it's kind of the same thing as what's happening in general. The next meeting we have is a lot of transfers done and. It's for specialized services accounts and it's.
Uh, for what, the?
E H S?
E H S?
Counting, counting.
Oh, that's in this meeting.
Okay, it's this meeting.
So this is an accounting request?
Right, so we got we got multiple accounting requests, don't we?
Uh, the next one is for ambulance billing, that's it.
Okay, alright.
And then the treasurer collector has a specialized service one and I can answer that one too.
And then with the ambulance, uh, where you put the ambulance?
Okay.
And the ma- the reason why it's other assessments, that's Bay Path. We had the reduction in excess and efficiency account. Um, that's why we had that money fortunately from Bay Path. Had the two individuals that used to work there, we would not have seen excess and efficiency as they have told me, but uh, we had the ability to transfer that.
Fantastic. Does anybody else have anything? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. Agenda number seven is review discuss an accounting department transfer request of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. From account number zero zero one nine four five dash five six five zero zero zero. Other assessments, S W C R V S. To account number zero zero three one three five dash five eight nine nine zero zero dash eight one two one ambulance billing services. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
On this one?
Thank you.
Yes.
So regards to this one, just so everybody knows, uh, last year the Town Council did a transfer for this. They had budgeted thirty three thousand dollars. They had to transfer approximately seventy five hundred to that account. When they did the budget, they just level funded it back at thirty three thousand. Obviously, our ambulance calls have increased, so this is comm staff that does all our billing, so we they charge us percentage of the bills that we issue. We don't have an in-house billing, so that's that's why the uh, increase in that. So what is not budgeted at the, um, Christine had given me uh, the year over year over year and they just level funded it and have not increased it in three years, so. Um, every year they transferred money at the end of the year to this.
Isn't that a contract that we do?
Yes, comm staff.
So if it's a contract, how?
Cause it's a percentage of the bill. It's not just an amount. It depends on how much we bill out.
Is it time to consider? Either taking the billing back into us or going for a contract for instead of a percentage, like it's a set fee? Is that something?
Yeah, I'll I'll review that with the fire chief.
Okay.
Yeah, to get exactly how that is uh, computed, but uh, we don't have the staff to do the billing because when you get to that billing, you're talking medical coding and all that.
You do all the coding, alright, I understand that, but is it time to look at a set figure versus a?
I'll ask them. I'll ask them what what they think and how it works.
Okay.
We'll research that.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. Agenda number eight is review discuss a treasurer collector department transfer of thirty two thousand five hundred from account number w- zero zero one one four five dash five one one zero 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 salaries and wages full time. To account number zero zero one one four five dash five three zero 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 specialized services. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
Mister Manager.
So specialized services included Joanne that was contracted through her company that uh. She was contracted to the town through a company to provide treasure collector services when Lonnie left. So we were paying, we had money in specialized services, but not enough to cover that balance, so this is to pay. Uh, to transfer the balance out of those accounts for her specialized, cause it wasn't paid, that's why it's coming out of salary and wages full time. Because we were not paying a treasure collector out of the salary account, we were paying as specialized services. So that sets the transfer, so.
Some of my.
Counselor Shen.
Trying to understand is we're spending thirty two thousand dollars to go into specialized services. And we got one week left. I don't understand why.
We did not do the transfers earlier in the day. We're trying to balance out all these accounts. So with all the counts, some of them were running in the negative and we're balancing them out. So it's a balance of transfers, cause we're not able to just transfer monies. So some of them were running in the negative until we could figure out where the monies were getting transferred from. We're paying the bills.
So the thirty two thousand isn't necessarily one.
It was, no, it's for the whole time that she's working.
So that, oh, so she's been paying and we end up with a negative?
Correct.
Okay.
Out of specialized services.
Right.
So we're balancing it.
I guess my trying to understand is I didn't think you were allowed by law to go into a negative balance.
I'm not sure how they did. They want to balance out the books, so I mean, I will have the account come in if you would like me to. Um, but what we're doing is trying to balance it to the, they, she may have taken the money out of. A different account to pay for it, but we're trying to balance these accounts out. That's all we're trying to do is balance out accounts.
I understand it, but it's like.
It's not for the end of the year that we spend it foolishly. It's a bill that we owe.
I understand it, but it's like spending money that we don't have.
We had money in the accounts. I'll get a clarity explanation.
But not in the. I can't know why I just wanted, but you didn't have enough into the into certain entities.
Right, so we had it within the treasurer's account.
Yeah.
Monies. And now we're trying to balance it from the full-time salaries to the specialized salaries. So there was enough money within the treasure collector's budget. But now we're just balancing it so that she can make the transfers and. Balance it out so that there's not a negative when we close the books.
Um, Counselor Dow at its hand, I will come to you.
So when you hire somebody or you do the budget. You have the money there or we transfer it or we issue that money at the beginning of the years?
Correct.
Now, end of the year, you're saying the account, have the money in different account, while we issue to treasures or whatever, we issued that money before. But the person now we transferred the money, those money to that account we paying from, we never have that budget or the money for that person?
So we had a treasurer collector. We have a salary.
Okay.
Say a hundred thousand dollars. Person was here a month and left. So we still had their salary within full-time salaries.
Okay.
We hired an individual company to come in. You can't pay the individual company out of the salary account, cause they're not personnel. We paid it under specialized services. So even though we have the money in this account for, we're not spending this amount of money, we're spending it under specialized services, cause that's, it's an accounting. We have chart of accounts. And that's why we're redoing the whole chart of accounts. So there's only specific line items that you can go in, so I can't put that bill into full-time salaries. I have to spend it out of specialized services.
So at the beginning, when we hired that special services company, we never uh, approved money for them to be?
We had a certain amount of money in it, but not a huge amount of money.
So what, how much we approve them for though? Uh, do, did you guys come back for extra money for that company? Was certain?
We we came here for a contract, yes. And I said, this is how much we're gonna pay them per hours. We contracted him for, I think it was twenty four hours. A week at X number of dollars.
And then that account run? Because usually when you come for a contract, we ask to transfer the money or?
Right, we had transferred some amount of money, but there was not enough in that specialized services. So now it's a balance, and so we had, we didn't pay anybody out of full-time ser- we're not playing a shell game. All right, it's just an accountant to clean up, to make sure that everything balances at the end of the year.
No, I understand, but seems like uh, we keep taking money from different account to cover uh, extra people we hires and we give them, I don't know.
Well, we didn't have a treasurer collector.
I know.
So you have a salary for the treasurer collector and I don't, so we had that salary, right? So we didn't have that person at all.
Yeah, but I understand.
So we had to hire a company.
But we already approved budget for that company. We already approved the one.
We didn't have enough money in the account. So we paid for those services, but didn't have enough money in the account.
But when we.
So now we have to balance it.
When we approved that company, was twenty five hours a week for one year?
We may not have done a a transfer for enough hours for the rest of the year for the amount of hours. We thought maybe we'd have a treasure collector sooner. So Michelle just cleaned up her books and said, hey, look, I realize I don't have enough in this account. I have to transfer. And that's what we're doing. Same thing with Del Olio, right? We we had to pay her, we had to pay another company. Uh, because we had uh, no assistant accountant, so we had to hire a company, a temp company for that. And now they're saying, okay, at the end of the year, when we post all, cause they posted all the accounts to bring everything up to date, now they've run in negative, so now we're saying. Hey, we have money in this account, we're gonna balance those accounts out.
And whatever money left over in the account, you already have money. Where's that going after that?
Goes to the free cash general fund at the end of the year.
So you think next year we're gonna have a better budget and better vision, what we need to pay and how we need to transfers? After you, you know, we give you the money?
Absolutely, because hopefully we keep all our staff. A lot of this, majority of this is we didn't have staff.
Yeah.
So we have to take from what we budgeted for staff and pay in companies and outsource fees. So you don't anticipate that when you budget. You say, hey, I I wanna have all my staff, so we would never budget, or they wouldn't have budgeted last year to say, hey, I need specialized, that much in specialized services. Because uh, I don't have staff, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So it it all happened during the year, so a lot of this is just adjusting the accounts and making sure that we don't close out at the end of the year in the negative. That's what's, cause we, if we close out those accounts in the negative and we don't balance those, then that affects our free cash. Cause they'll say, hey, you didn't balance it out, that accounts in a negative, so this, what we're trying to do is make su- we ask every department, go through your budgets. Make sure that anything that you might have missed, you account for. Right? We also told them, anything that you anticipate for bills for the end of the year, you do a purchase order and encumber those monies. So that when the invoice comes in, so somebody goes to.
I'm concerned.
Advanced Auto Parts and gets parts today. Right? But doesn't put the invoice into next week. You're in the next fiscal year, but we've put a purchase order in place to say, hey, charge off of that purchase order for that money, but. Nobody's been given any authority to buy anything outside of what is absolutely needed. No other items?
Okay. All right, uh, I have a list here of people who want to talk. I just wanted to remind everybody that the budget that we are cleaning up here in the final week of this year was created by an interim town manager. Before, two months before Mister Jovan was hired, we've had to increase the budget at some say, near like six or seven percent just to fix the mistakes of many managers of the past. And I can tell you from, used to worked in here ten years ago, that the the, some of these transfers are being done now. And they're actually better than the way that we've accounted in the past, because sometimes it just goes through in the wrong account and miscellaneous pays for everything and something, and this year we're actually. Taking the time at the end of the year to make sure that we do it right and and that things are balanced from the proper, from the proper accounts and next year, since we just approved. It a wonderful budget compared to last year's budget. We should be able to not have to make such drastic changes next year at the creation of budget and at the end when it comes to transfers. We'll get, we'll get better and better every year, but this is cleaning up many mistakes of the past. Um, I've had Mister Kelly and then Counselor Lazo.
Through you. Um, my question is this really, and just to clarify it for myself and for I think other people, um. When we do a budget, we appropriate a certain amount of money for the management of the town. That money is then allocated to these relative, these these accounts.
Correct.
Correct? So what we're really doing here, we're not, we're not spending the, we're not spending the town into the red year.
No.
We're working on a part of money that has been allocated into the various accounts. As it turned out, as the year progressed, we're now just simply moving the money so that our accounts do not look like they're in the negative. Okay, so we're not really, we're not spending more money than we have budgeted.
Correct.
Alright, we're just moving money, we're just, we're just changing essentially the allocations because they turned out to be.
Correct.
Um, not accurate.
Or circumstances beyond.
Circumstances beyond our control or whatever, if it's one reason or another, so we're just really, we've got, we've got a big part of money. That we allocated the money into, we have more money in this account than we do in this account, and we're just moving that, moving the money so that, so that we can. Ensure that the the money, the money that's supposed to be paid out of the allocation is is paid.
Right.
Proper allocation, right?
Correct, and I actually had a a department that tried to put together a transfer, because they had some money in one account, they wanted to put it in supplies. To say, hey, it's the end of the year and I have some extra money, can I buy this? And I, I said, no. Do you, unless you absolutely need it and it was a critical shortage, no, you'd budget it for next year and do it. This is simply to say. These are services that we incurred and we just, to your point, allocated to the proper accounts.
And this makes our spending more tran- more transparent for the taxpayer. Uh, Counselor Lazo.
I think what we have to keep in mind for the ones that have been on the council for a while. Daniels, myself, few others, the revolving door has to stop. If you stop the revolving door, you stop the, you know, the unpredictables. I mean, we all know that when you do your budget for sand and salt, it's like Neil and Jello on a tree. How do you know what the weather's gonna be? We could just look at the almanac and hope for the best, but. As Counselor Kelly said, we're working within the bounds of these specific budgets. But if you look at the revolving door, when someone came in and someone left, police, fire, town hall. The vacancy leave, depending on when they leave, leaves some money left or no money left. Or somebody leaves at a higher rate, in lower rate. I mean, we are constantly doing the budget. When you do a budget at the beginning of the year, that's your best guesstimation. Then you work that budget out here long, depending on the turn of events, uh, in the town conference. So I think we're gonna be better, I think, you're right in what you're saying, you gotta be. The the revolving door is slowing down. People are not leaving, they're coming, which is after fill the rest of positions and stabilize. Thank you.
Exactly. Uh, Counselor Shen.
You know, the, uh, what I don't understand is some of these accounts that are short. In the specialized service, go back as far as February. April.
Mm-hmm.
And here it is, it's the end of June, soon to be July, and it's like we're just finding out that these accounts are short. That's, that's the difficulty I have. It's like some of these accounts going back to, uh, like for instance, the uh. Closing the books. I think we closed the books out in February.
But she's still been employed by us.
Right, I understand, but it's a cover expenses related going back as far as February, and here we are.
So I'm gonna be honest with you, even Michelle there, she goes, I should have had these transfers in before, okay? And we were looking at where can we get the money, where is it gonna come from and when to put it forward, and she's like, you know, she's like, hey, I know it's, you know, we're at the end of the fiscal year. But she was also getting tax title, things out, everything, so she didn't prioritize it to get it.
Correct.
Now, June thirtieth is this week, we made it priority to say, we need to make sure everything closes out. The way we need to close it out and we've put it, if you have seen our offices for the last two days. Making sure that we can target as much as we can to make sure we close the year. Cause I'll be honest, last year they probably didn't do any of this at the last rate, right? So we're sitting here at the end of the, last week of the fiscal year going. Get your bills in, make sure everything's all set, where are we getting the money, where are we transferring? This insurance, when you're gonna see in a little bit, has been on my desk since February. Trying to figure out where are we gonna get the money, making sure we're allocated correctly and do all that. It's the end of the year, we're closing out the books. Be done, transfers, let's get it done. Next year, like to the point that has been mentioned before, we're gonna be in a better position. Michelle has already said, I won't be in this position next year to come at the end of the year to do this. Right? We've all been under the gun for a bunch of different things. I'm not making excuses, but it was some of the things of what are we gonna prioritize? What are we gonna do first, right? Hey, make sure we get curbside building, this, this, get tax title, this, this, and now, yeah, we are under the gun, end of the fiscal year, let's make sure. Uh, transfers are in. That's why we have a fifty agenda item on June twenty seventh, clean up the books. We might have a couple next month, but rather than have fifty in the middle of July. We're at the point where, okay, we're in pretty good shape. And the good thing is we have money to transfer. We're not sitting here going, hey, I have to target stabilization or free cash to balance out books. We're balancing within what was appropriated by the council last year.
Counselor Shen, you're worried in the future that we don't, you don't want us to overdraft from our own accounts anymore and we're the bank, so we get to balance it, but we can't do that in the future.
We wanna do that too. We wanna do that. We'll have a better sense. We'll have tighter controls. Uh, I, the goal is. And a lot of this too is when you close out your books late. You don't start your new fiscal year totally, right? So if you don't have everything cleaned up and you're trying to encumber monies for the next fiscal year, it messes up your books for this fiscal year, so the goal is. Let's have a clean break here. All our encumbrances now are gonna go to a single line item as opposed to within every other account. So there'll be a, everybody has told, okay, whatever your encumbrances are for the year, that's gonna go to an encumbrance account. Every bill that comes in is gonna get withdrawn off of that encumbrance account, so when we load up the new budget. You don't have those encumbrances showing that says, hey, you have more money than you think you do. So it's all a cleanup of of making sure we're on good footing for this fiscal year too.
Well, it's just that we we put on all these extra positions to help with the financing and I thought during add-on of every appropriated money. Or at least we're said that where we're gonna get the money from.
Mm-hmm.
Here we are in the air where maybe just adding those money from, right?
So we're still, our accounting department is accountant department of one. Christine's by herself in that department right now, has been for a month. She's the only person there in the accounting office, right? And they've done an honorable job making sure bills are paid, okay? Some help from Elana. Her, she, her and her person isn't that until mid-July, right? Yes, a treasurer collector, but they have their own thing. That's not the accounting portion of it. Their job is to issue bills, collect and all that. They're doing all that. Michelle has already targeted, like I said, tax title to the tune, I believe she said last, yesterday to me, of a half a million dollars of money that came back this fiscal year. So I look at that, that's a good concentration, right? Half a million to seven hundred thousand dollars of money that's coming back to the town of Southbridge that were on the books. So they're, they're doing that. We got the curbside, we got all our billing trying to get that in pace. Now this is an accounting cleanup and that's what we're doing.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have anything else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present. One number, uh, agenda number nine, review and discuss a treasurer collector department transfer of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. From account number zero zero one seven one zero dash five nine one zero zero zero. Maturing principal on debt to account. Zero zero one seven one zero dash five nine two five zero zero. Interest to short-term debt. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
Mister Manager.
If you read her transfer request, it's pretty detailed. Right? The fire station roads had an interest due of two hundred and fifty thousand, only a hundred thousand was budgeted. However, after she reviewed all the debt payments, we're over budgeted for two borrowings allowing us to cover this expense. So it's just within the debt allocations that she's making this transfer. Now, my understanding was that this topic was brought up to the interim town manager last year at budget time. He was told. Let it go. And that's a lot of the stuff that we're dealing with right now. Things that were brought to the table at budget and then told, worry about it next year. Not dealing with it, I'm not changing it, so this was ju- so there's no, it's already been budgeted, it's just where it, where it's getting paid from. It's an allocation change.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous of all present.
Yeah, just a question about, when it shows balance and transfer from account number and show how many sixty dollars left in that account?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Agenda number ten, review discuss a transfer request of the accounting department in the amount of three hundred thirty dollars from account number zero zero one one three five dash five seven three zero 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 to the following accounts. Zero zero one one three five dash five seven one zero 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 mileage on in-state travel for a hundred ten dollars. And zero zero one one three five dash five seven one one zero zero conferences and meetings for two hundred twenty dollars. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
I will. Second.
Mister Manager.
Yeah, just simply, I I think I talked about this during budget season, they didn't. Yeah, just simply, I, I think I talked about this during budget season, they didn't allocate for conferences and training. Those conferences are important. From Christine's viewpoint when she came back from this last conference, because now that she has a better understanding, she learns a lot more. It's a good opportunity for her to talk to other accountants about how you do things, so that's, that's the only thing for that.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. So we have to pay her to go train to my?
Well, no, this is the conference that she goes to. We all go to conferences.
Maya?
We, we pay for mileage, yes.
She use her own card?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item, agenda item number eleven, review discuss a treasure collector department transfer of four thousand eight hundred dollars from account number zero zero one one four five dash five three four one zero zero advertisement and promotion to the following accounts. Zero zero one one four five dash five four two zero zero office supplies, eighteen hundred dollars. Zero zero one one four five dash five eight five five zero zero office equipment for three thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
Mr. Manager.
So this is office supplies, it's boxes to put documents in and clean up her office and the other offices in that area. And then the scanners for the treasurer's office, you know, when you do a check scanner, it's only one that's working, so she wants to replace, she needs to replace those. Cause we now have three workstations that are gonna be in there, so she has to replace them because they're not working properly. So, because we have the utility builder that's gonna go in there as a collector as well.
Right, right.
So there'll be three state, if you look in there, if you've seen, if you've walked into the collector's office, you see that we've put some partitions up for glass for protection and all that as well, so just continue to clean that up and box it up and put their files in.
Great. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number twelve is review discuss an insurance transfer of seventy-five hundred from account number six one zero four five zero five eight three zero 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 nine one two five zero water reserve fund to account number six one zero four five zero five seven four zero 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 water insurance. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
Mr. Manager.
Okay. So you'll see in the transfer form, there's a multiple different transfers in this form, so they've broken them down into individual. But it's all for the same reasons, it's all for insurance purposes. Our insurance purposes were not funded at the proper level last year. The year before was the same thing, I think, if you look at, there was a transfer request the year before for a hundred nineteen thousand. They never allocated enough money when they did the budget last year to account for that increase. So we had to make up last year's plus any increase that we had this year.
Okay, anybody have, Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. So all these insurance go onto one place, employee insurance or different building?
No, it's property casualty.
Property?
Property casualty, yeah.
So, and, and this is one of the reasons, I think, some of the councils, we're pushing hard to get rid of some property the town owns. Like this, we'll have to keep paying insurance on it and maintaining for nothing.
Yeah.
So I hope, I hope you guys move faster because we keep hearing, next week, we're working hard, we're doing this, we're doing that. I hope you guys move forward faster on those properties because we're wasting the residents and taxpayers' money. So, and, and we can put those property back on tax to be in fix and generate more tax.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, sir, Councilor Dow. All right, anybody have anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number thirteen is review and discuss an insurance transfer of fourteen thousand dollars from account number six zero zero four four zero five eight three zero 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 eight nine five zero zero sewer reserve fund to account number six zero zero four four zero five seven four one zero zero sewer insurance. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
Mr. Manager.
It's all the same transfer, it's all the same, so.
Very good.
It's all going to property insurance.
For water and sewer.
Sewer department and all the other buildings, town and school.
Very good. Anybody have any other discussion, all right? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number fourteen, review discussion search transfer of twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars from account number zero zero one nine four five dash five six five zero 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 other assessments, SWCRVS to account number zero nine four zero 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 dash five seven four zero zero property and casualty insurance town. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
More of the same for casualty insurance?
All, the rest of these transfers are all for this
The rest of the?
Property casualty, the rest of the agenda.
Okay, does anybody have anything more for this specific item? All of those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number fifteen, review discussion search transfer of ten thousand seven fifty from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one town council reserve to account number zero nine four zero 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 dash five seven four zero 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 property and casualty insurance town. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
Is there any further discussion with this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda number sixteen, review discussion search transfer of thirty thousand from account numbers zero nine four zero 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 dash five seven one zero 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 dash zero three zero zero workers' comp school to account number zero nine four zero 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 dash five seven four zero 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 dash zero three zero zero property and casualty insurance school. Entertain a motion to recommend to council for approval.
I will, second.
Anybody have any discussion? Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. They're much different, thirty thousand and the workers' comp extra paid, that's how much they screw up on the, on the, on the numbers? Thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, whatever it was, that's what it was, it was on the budget, yeah. No, that's what we had in there, it's being transferred to property casualty. I don't know why they budgeted that much in workers' comp for the school.
Extra leftovers.
But there is a, there's a number of employees that are not part of the, right, their regular workers' comp, not. Yeah, every employee's in workers' comp, but there's a lot of employees. Now, I gotta think, because we have police and fire that are covered under separately. Police and fire are not covered under workers' comp, but every town employee, so they have a lot of employees.
I know, but when you say thirty thousand.
So there must have been not a lot of injury this year?
No, no, nothing to do with that, no. When you budget, you go by how much you pay salary to the employee, whatever, that's all.
Okay, um, Councilor Daniel.
That's a good question, I'll follow up on that, find out. It could, it could, which could affect net school spending.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Councilor Dow.
Sorry, Chair, for you, isn't it like a couple of years ago, we have a penalty fifteen thousand, we call it never pay, where you guys discussed like to reduce it to fifteen something, is that the same thing?
No.
Something else, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I will just say, when it comes to insurance, Michelle, Dean, everybody's working very hard to make sure that we have good numbers for insurance. Now whether, we may still need a transfer at the end of the year, you never know, based on changes, but we're trying to refine that, make sure that we're good.
There's no mistake, three hundred thousand overpaid for employee like the home?
No, 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 oh, no, none of this is a mistake, no. This is just premiums.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number seventeen, review discuss an insurance transfer of fourteen thousand from account number zero zero one one five one dash five three zero 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 legal specialized services to account number zero nine four zero 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 five seven four zero 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 three zero zero property and casualty insurance school. Entertain a motion to recommend to council for approval.
I will.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on this one? Ca- uh, Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, for you. This, are these both school accounts?
Yeah, they're, they're all school accounts, but.
I mean, the specialized services, the legal specialized services is a school?
No, no, that's a town, no, that's the town legal.
And so we're actually transferring one, from one appropriation to another?
Within the general fund, yes. We do that.
The school budget is separate though, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's still the town, uh, it's still the town, no, all insurance comes out of the town budget. Doesn't come out of the school budget, that's town appropriation.
Can we take that money away from the school budget? As the, you know, I don't know what you call it, but when you utilize.
They're, the, these costs that go into the school are part of your Schedule Nineteen, like Councilor Daniel said. So whatever we allocate to school goes into your net school spending.
And we have done that with that?
What's that?
The insurances and stuff?
Well, this insurance goes to, whatever we pay for the school goes to the Schedule Nineteen. So that counts for our net school spending. So we're not taking away from the school, we're at, we're making sure that it counts to the school. It's allocated to the schools. So that's when they say you, the town must contribute a certain amount, that's included, these insurances are included as our allocation to the schools.
So those increases should show a future account adjustments with the school, am I correct, as far as that school spending?
No, they go to the allocation net school spending. So when the school does their end of the year report, right, cause they'll do our end of the year report, we'll do our end of the year report. We have to show, and then this year with the addition of Dean, you know, he, he has more familiarity with the Schedule Nineteen. We'll comb that Schedule Nineteen to make sure that we're allocated, we're getting all the allocations that we're supposed to for net school spending. Because they say that we're pretty close on net school spending. And preliminary thoughts, Dean believes that we're, we're, we're a bit over that, so that, you know, so.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number eighteen, review discussion search transfer of six thousand dollars from account number zero one nine zero 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 dash five two seven four zero zero property repair and maintenance and demo to account number zero nine four zero 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 dash five seven four zero 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 dash zero three zero zero property and casualty insurance school. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I will, second.
Is there anybody else who has any discussion?
I, I was just gonna say, um, to, uh, it's Kelly, and then future Kelly, sorry, Kelly. If you recall, during our general government subcommittee for this, uh, insurances, that would have been part of the insurance through general government when we did our presentation on budget. So that would have been part of that overall packet that would have been sent to you for the allocations of insurance. That would have been part of our presentation, so it would have been part of the school budget, be part of our presentation for insurances.
You have further?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, for you, and this is really more of a comment and, of course, I want to thank the town manager for going through the budget, going through these accounts and making sure that we're gonna end the year properly. This is not easy work, it's time consuming and it is, I'm, I'm, I don't like dealing with numbers, that's why I became a lawyer. But, so I mean, it has to be, you know, it is incredible work and I, I want to thank you for going through that. Again, though, I just want to emphasize, this for whoever's listening, I mean, none of this is making a recommendation to spend more money, all right? This is all money that we have already appropriated for the town. And we're merely allocating, and, and the budget at the beginning of the year is simply a prediction of what we think is gonna, we're gonna spend. And we allocate money, the town allocates money to these accounts. And at the end of the year, they may, one may be high, one may be low, but there's no more money being spent than what was appropriated. That will be a separate issue. This is just really, this is an exercise in accounting, frankly. It's like taking, it's like you have ten thousand dollars in your, and you divide it between your checking account and two savings accounts. Then you realize your checking account is running low and you need to transfer money from one of your savings accounts into, into the, into the, uh, checking account. That's all this thing done. So, you know, hopefully in next year, I mean, budgeting, we should have a good understa, a pretty good understanding of what, what departments are gonna spend what money. And hopefully, next year, we will, you know, we won't have to go through as much of this. There will be some of it, but maybe not as much of this as we have in the last couple of years, uh, in the last couple of weeks. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and you know, I'll just add, there really wasn't that many very tiny transfers this year at the end, so that's, that's, that's a start there too. Does anybody else have any discussion on number eighteen, Councilor Dow?
Sure, that's why we hire local town managers, we're gonna hold them accountable and he can't run out of the town. He's gonna be local, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna see him everywhere. And that's why we added more as, uh, professional accountant, professional treasurer, to make sure we're going in the right direction. Not like last three, four year, we have, uh, people unqualified, unprofessional. And when you say something, they all go against you, you're the bad guy, thank you.
It's true, Southridge first nowadays, so, uh, no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present, agenda item nine?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for those that are here, it couldn't get on the agenda, but it'll be on the town council agenda, so you don't have to discuss it tonight, but just so you are aware of it. If you're, those that were on council this year, we had put in an application for a MASH trail grant for a hundred thousand and the council had approved twenty thousand dollars for capital stabilization as a match. Unfortunately, we did not get that grant this fiscal year. So there will be an agenda item on the town council's agenda to transfer the money from the MASH trail upgrade back to capital stabilization. Secondly, today, we were notified of the Massachusetts preservation, uh, grant that we had applied for. We did get that grant for the study of the town hall, so that came in today, so.
Nice.
For the architectural study, so we did get that grant.
All right, that's fantastic news.
But just, I didn't want you to think that you're blindsided by this agenda item for the, I'm letting you know that it will be on the agenda. But it's just merely to put back into capital stabilization. It's allocated as a, as a, as a cost in capitalization, it's just a transfer back.
All right, very good, okay. Agenda item nineteen is adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, meeting's adjourned at six forty-seven.